They're coming in now. Go ahead, Council.
That's my, that's an old school phone.
Okay, I would like to now call the December first, two thousand twenty, North Providence Town Council to meet to order. Ralph, is everyone here?
Yes, everyone's here.
Okay. All right, before we get started, I know as we get towards the end of the meeting, a lot of people, you know, sign off. I think, you know, we have to take this opportunity to recognize Manny Juicy. As tonight is his last council meeting. And under normal circumstances, we'd be, we would be able to celebrate his accomplishments and everything he's done for the town. But unfortunately, we're meeting like this and, you know, alls I can say is hopefully when things get back to normal, all of us can go out to dinner. And celebrate everything Manny's done for the town and thank him. You know, Manny, like I said, this is his last council meeting and and he's been a fixture in the town for many years, as I'm sure many of us on this council has played for for him with the North Providence Jets. A lot of people don't know that when I first got on the council, this town had just come out of a very dark period, there was just a special election and Manny guided this town through that period, him, Mark Welch, and I believe there was two other council people were able to get us through that that period and without, you know, Manny's guidance on this council, who knows where we would have been as we look at where the town is is today. He's always been a common voice on this council, he's always provided leadership, he's always given me really good advice when I've asked him for that and he's always had the willingness to do what's right for for his constituents and I can't thank him enough for that and you know, after serving with him for ten years, I'm proud to call him a friend, so Manny, thank you for your service. I think it's very unfortunate that this is your last meeting like under these circumstances, but you know, hopefully when we can go out to dinner with other people not from our family, we can all get together and celebrate you, so thank you.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna just thank everybody for the last ten years because even though I've been on here sixteen years, the last ten years have been very memorable. I think this town's accomplished great things in the last ten years and made great strides towards being a leader in the in the in the state. So I just wanna thank everybody that I got the opportunity to work with and maybe, maybe I'll get active in something else, who knows, you know?
But thank you so much Manny for everything you've done for me and for everyone, thank you. For always being in my corner, I love you.
Thank you.
Manny, you can always come back as a member of the public, you know?
No, that's all right. When you guys are going out in those stormy nights, I'm gonna be sitting home watching TV.
You did, you deserve it, you deserve to relax.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion impossible action in regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the three meetings of November four, fourth, two thousand twenty, do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
So move.
Move, motion been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second? Second by Councilman Emery G, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes had it. Proposed ordinances, notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the town council would consider passage of the following proposed ordinances. Item number two, ordinance twenty dash zero zero nine, ordinance amending certain sections of the chapter four of the court of ordinance of the town of North Providence concerning restraint of dogs and the penalty of such, do you have a motion to pass ordinance twenty dash zero zero nine?
So move.
Motion been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second? Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions, any questions from the public?
Yes, sir, Mayor Lombardi has his hand raised.
Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
All right, hold on, I'm gonna move him in. Go ahead, Mayor, you can speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to join in, in the congratulations to Councilman Juicy for being a great supporter of all the positive initiatives that we've moved forward in just within the last ten years, Manny, so the only thing that we can offer or ask for for you and your family is for good health and God bless you, Manny, you've been a great, great representative of the people for the last thirteen, fifteen years that you walk, so take good care of yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, motion been made to pass ordinance two zero dash zeros nine, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item number three, Utica and Motten Street abandonment petition continuance, town council to consider the approval of a petition to abandon the Utica and Motten Streets. Submitted by sixteen oh one Middlespring Avenue LLC, the petition was advertised on July ten, July seventeenth and twenty fourth, two thousand twenty was continued to this date. I have to read an email into the record. Dear Attorney Welch, due to a scheduling conflicts, I I am requesting that the above matter be continued to the January twenty twenty one town council meeting. Thank you sincerely, Mary B. Sakachi, Attorney at Law, so do I have a motion to continue this matter to January?
So move.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Motone, any questions? Any questions from the public?
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, item number four, North Providence Housing Authority, North Providence Housing Authority Executive Director William Malloy to appear at the request of the council to inform the members as to what the housing authority does and answer any questions on their behalf. Mr. Malloy, here?
Yes, he is, sir, I'll let him in.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Malloy, can I just say your name for the record?
Sure, Mr. President, William E. Malloy, M A L L O Y.
Thank you, okay, thank you so much for joining us tonight, last month, we had a pretty good discussion about the housing authority. And some of the newer members of the council were just asking some basic questions and they were actually very good questions. So that's why we had you here tonight, just so we could kinda get some clarification on some things, so again, thank you for joining us.
Absolutely, pleasure, pleasure, Mr. President.
Mario, I know, I know you had a, made the request and there was a specific question about what the housing authority owns and what they don't own. Does it, I'm gonna leave the floor open so people can ask away.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my, my thought would be if Mr. Malloy could just give us kind of like a brief rundown of, you know, day to day what they're doing and then, and then maybe some questions I think that come from that.
Sure.
Sure, so, thanks, Councilor, I have a vast amount of information here because I didn't know specifically what you were interested in, but I have some, a lot of statistics, a lot of money values, a lot of landlords and tenants and things like that, I have a mission statement from the housing authority on, you know, what our daily goals are in the town of North Providence. Where would you like me to start, sir?
I would just, just so for time purposes, what, I know there was a question about the property off Charles Street that you were buying and there was some that we don't own some of them and then some of them we oversee, I think that there need to be some clarification on that.
Sure, let me give you a breakdown, if I may, Mr. President, of the properties that the North Providence Housing Authority has responsibility for, there's four public housing properties and two public family housings, the Mariville Manor, which is located at nine forty seven, nine forty five Charles Street. This is the Charles Street Manor, which is in the back of Mariville, which is thirty units and Allen Dale Manor, which is on Watts Quetucket Avenue, we have twenty four units. Sunset Tennis Terrace, which is located back behind the CBS on Middlespring Avenue, there's seventy units there, we have family housing at seventy two Andover and twenty five Wentworth, four apartments on Andover and ten on Wentworth. That's the public housing section, so we have a hundred and forty six possible apartments, varying in size from four bedrooms, most of them are studios for the elderly and the disabled. As far as the section eight, well, the Housing Choice Voucher Program, which has different sections in that, and if I'm getting into the weeds, just let me stop, you know, just tell me to stop. The Housing Choice Voucher Program has the homeless veterans program, which we service seventy one homeless vets in the town of North Providence, that's through private landlords, that's where they pay a portion based on their rent, all of HCB is based on a portion of their rent is based on their income and then the housing authority picks up the rest, so we have total of the two hundred and fifty six Housing Choice Voucher recipients, participants in North Providence with two hundred and six landlords and those landlords are paid on a year and it's a projected number of up to two point one million dollars is paid out to those landlords to house these people. Whether it be near elderly, there's different categories under the HCB, we also have a successful homeownership program where people have worked their way off of Housing Choice Voucher, off of the section eight program and have bought a home with the assistance of the North Providence Housing Authority. So to really specify anything, it's such a broad based program and with many different avenues to help the homeless and low income and elderly and disabled in North Providence, which is part of the mission statement and I'll read a portion of it. The mission of the housing authority in the town of North Providence is to assist low income families with safe, decent and affordable housing opportunities and I feel that we do that on a daily basis. So I have other statistics about the public housing ones, you know, the income coming in, the income coming out, which is all federally subsidized.
Bill.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. President, if I may.
Go ahead.
As you know, I'm very familiar with the housing authority, was on the board for nineteen years. I think that what some of the council people here do not know is that you are not a town entity, am I correct?
Correct.
So you're strictly federal government. You, you pay taxes on the properties that are owned by the housing authority, am I correct?
Correct, we have a pilot tax program.
Right, so, but as far as having anything, as far as the town, the council or anyone else, we really don't have any say because you are a federal program, am I correct?
Correct, we, I've worked with many people on the screen right now in day to day business of the housing authority, but as far as
I mentioned that because I didn't think that anyone knew that you're not, you're not like the Salvatoreman senior, senior center or you're not like anything like that, you're you're a federalized program.
Correct.
I'm not sure everyone knew that.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Do you people have the ability to designate a housing unit as strictly senior?
Well. I'm sorry.
Or does it have to be mixed use?
Well, there's a government, as HUD likes formulas, there's a formula that says that we have to have so many elderly and so many disabled units per our jurisdiction. So some of the houses like Sunset Terrace is sixty two and over, so that's considered elderly, so those seventy units are specified for that, for elderly. Allen Dale Manor, which is on Watts Quetucket Avenue is, has a designation for both elderly and disabled. And those are, again, formulas based on HUD's.
So you do have, so you do have some, some units that are strictly senior, the only reason I'm asking that is we've got one high rise down in, down in Centredale. We're having all kinds of problems with, with the seniors being in there and we've got drug deals and going on down there, we've got everything under the sun going on and the seniors are all scared to death.
And if I may, sir, there's two different kinds of Housing Choice Voucher Programs. The one that North Providence Housing Authority is responsible for is called a voucher program where you have an actual document to the, to the family or the person has an actual document. Centredale Manor and the places are privately owned, each have specific landlords, specific waiting lists and they're not under the umbrella of the North Providence Housing Authority. Those are called project based section eight apartments, so if I move in there, I pay thirty percent of my rent. If I move out, you move in, you pay thirty percent of your rent and the rest of the, the government gives them a number per apartment, so it's, it's basically a private business which has nothing to do with us, sir.
All right, that's, that's what I'm, because they, they got all kinds of problems down there. It's nice to see that we still can designate some units as senior, you know?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. President, can I, can I ask a quick question?
Yep.
Mr. Malloy, what is the criteria for qualifying, is it strictly income based? And then second, my second question is, are there any available units or is there a waiting list?
Which program are you talking, thanks, Councilor, which program are you?
I'm talking about the, the public housing.
Public housing. Well, to answer the question about waiting list, we have a active waiting list of over two hundred and fifty people. So, and that list is formulated, not by any control of us, it's again, HUD has a formula and variables and each apartment and the public housing is based on thirty percent. The other, the Housing Choice Voucher Program is based on a centralized waiting list that's in Rhode Island Housing and so we, when we go to pick people out for, like I was instructed in November to put more people, give more vouchers out, I went to the centralized waiting list, pulled off the people from that list and offered them vouchers with a success rate of, because there's over fifteen thousand people on that list for the Housing Choice Voucher, so I think that we're all aware of the hard times, that they're difficult and I often get phone calls from people trying to get housed, they're living in their cars and whatnot. And we try to do the best we can for them, but unfortunately, there's just not enough houses, I mean, we, enough housing in, in the country, never mind North Providence, so does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, and, and the, but the, the public housing, is that, I guess, who, who gets priority, is it, or how do you qualify?
We, we have, it's called preferences, Councilor, and you have preferences for people that live in North Providence, elderly, there's income, there's veterans, there's all these variables considered when you're putting that person into the list, so then you only move when people leave and because we have such a, such fine quality apartments that people don't leave and you know, that some people, there was one woman here that was here for thirty five years and so could we use more apartments, yes, and but we don't have, you know, we, we keep a list, a strict list and I've dealt with many, many citizens in North Providence that, you know, they call every six months and, and look and so we, our staff here is very cognizant of what's going on and, you know, we try to be as helpful as possible with limited resources.
Any other questions for Mr. Malloy?
The President.
Go ahead.
Mr. Malloy, thank you for appearing tonight, we do truly appreciate this. Our, my question is specifically about the parcel of land that the mayor appeared before us about last month, adjacent to your headquarters here on Charles Street, what are the plans? Once you obtain that land, do you already have plans figured out for whether it's gonna be housing or some sort of open space or have you thought that through yet?
Thanks, Councilor, no, the, we're in the infant stages and, and I've, I've spoken to the mayor on numerous occasions and the North Providence Housing Authority is interested in that land. But with HUD comes many more obstacles than just a regular business transaction in, in the real world. So there's a process that has to be followed that I only began investigating right after when we got back from the COVID and whatnot, so I didn't I had a conference call today at one o'clock with, with HUD officials from Boston and Washington and so there, there is an avenue for us to purchase it, we do want to purchase the land, I have, we have, the housing authority has an attorney, Steve Musella and I've been working with him, had a conversation with the mayor last week and we're interested and I believe that, as the mayor has said, that it's, it's right next to us, so it's, it's smart business for us to to purchase that land, but with HUD requirements, you need to have the thought process and all of the paperwork done before you purchase the land, unless it's done through a nonprofit, which we have a nonprofit in North Providence called Northern Housing Associates and we're, we're trying to work with that and the attorney and HUD so that we can purchase the land to do some good with it, where there's a lot of technicalities, there's only so many, but we could build a huge, the biggest building in the world but the government's only gonna give us a hundred and fifty two subsidies and we're at one forty six now, so even if we were to build on that property, fiscally, it would be wise not to put more apartments in it because you wouldn't be getting the subsidy back from the government, so there was a lot of talk, it was just because it's a positive move for the housing authority, I mean, it's great, it's right here, it's right next to us, there's things that we could do to help, you know, even if it's six more families, I think that it's, it's worthy of us to look into it, investigate it and I'm under a bigger microscope, it's, like I said before, it's not like I'm just purchasing, purchasing it, me and you, it's hard in this requirement, it's environmental studies and there's a whole host, there's a long list of things that have to be done before we purchase it. So to, the short answer is we're very interested. I'm sure that my attorney will be in touch with me and will be working on this. And like I said, I had a conversation with the mayor last week and informed him that it's not gonna go as fast as maybe everybody would like it, myself included, but it is going in a positive direction, slow though it may be.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy.
Thanks, Councilor.
Any other questions? Mr. Malloy, oh, we got him here? Thank you so much for coming out, Ralph, is there any questions from, anyone that's logged on, I can't see who.
I see no hands raised, do any public wish to speak, raise their hand or if it's star six on their phone? No, nothing, sir.
Okay.
Mr. President, I, I would like to invitation, things become normal at any time for anybody to come forward and meet with us at nine forty five Charles Street and take a hand look at what we do on a daily basis to help the citizens of North Providence, my door is always open, thank you.
Thank you and thank you for everything you do. Okay, item number five, speed hump, council president, audio request discussion impossible vote regarding a speed hump at Linwood Street and Redwood Drive, I'm just gonna entertain a motion to send this to the ordinance committee.
So move.
Motion been made by Councilman Juicy, second by Councilman Famigetti, any questions? If you're none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, item number six, Beach Street Property, council president, audio request discussion impossible vote on a property located on Beach Street next to North Providence High School. I'm gonna entertain a motion to send a letter to our police department just to have a look over there. This gentleman contacted me, where his driveway is, is right where that gate is for where the kids coming in and out of North Providence High School, and I guess sometimes you have some kids parked on a, in his driveway, near his, around his house. So I'm just gonna entertain a motion to send a letter up, police department to keep an eye on that situation. Motion been made by Councilman Juicy, second by Councilman Di Lorenzo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, item number seven, resident parking only, Councilman Juicy requests discussion and vote on resident parking only in front of Forty Grover Street, Councilman Juicy.
Yeah, the woman that lives at Forty Grover, she lives there in an apartment and people are always parking in front of her house and she can't get, if she gets company or anything, there's no place for her to park, so she's asking for resident parking only. So I make a motion to send this to ordinance.
And motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second?
Second.
What was that second by, I couldn't see.
I did.
Second by Councilman Famigetti, any, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight, temporary outdoor dining ordinance, Councilman Famigetti requests discussion impossible vote on extending the temporary outdoor dining emergency ordinance, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President, though, as everybody knows in reference to the pandemic, we passed a temporary emergency outdoor dining ordinance to allow for our restaurants and bars to maintain service in some sort of normalcy and capacity during the pandemic. It's been very successful, we actually addressed this at the ordinance committee meeting earlier, actually last week and no complaints, we've talked to the police department, no complaints have come through this expanded business operation, so it's been pretty successful, I think it shows that the businesses are taking advantage of this and, but not in a negative way and I think we need to do everything that we can to help the businesses during this time, these people are our neighbors, our friends and any way that we can help them, I think we need to do that, so the ordinance committee did recommend passage of, or an extension of the outdoor dining ordinance to March thirty first. So with that said, I think Mark, do we make a motion now to extend this?
Yes. Ooh, sorry.
Okay. Okay.
I was muted, but make a, make a motion to adopt the ordinance to extend.
Okay, that being said, I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance, or make a motion to extend the temporary ordinance.
By Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala, any questions? If you're none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number nine, Birchwood Drive, Councilman Famigetti requests discussion possible vote regarding speeding issues on Birchwood Drive, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President, continued speeding issues on Birchwood Drive, we thought it was resolved, but it is back, so I'd just like to make a motion to send this back to the ordinance committee.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
By Councilman Emery G, any questions?
No question.
There being none, all's in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it, item number ten, Oliver Street, Councilman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote regarding traffic issues on Oliver Street, Councilman.
Thank you, so this is actually tying in with a couple of other streets that we're dealing with in the ordinance committee, specifically Lena and Anne Streets. So I'd like to send this over to the ordinance committee, so I'd make a motion to send that there.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala, any questions?
Go public.
There being none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number eleven, Jane Street, Councilman Emery G requests discussion possible vote on speeding and other traffic issues on Jane Street, Councilman.
Excuse me, thank you, President Audiello, yes, I'm just similar to Councilman Famigetti before, this is a repeat traffic issue on Jane Street, so we already have the information that we need and we're gonna contact the police and get a more current traffic study done, so in the meantime, I just wanna make a motion to refer this matter to the ordinance committee.
And motion been made by Councilman Emery G, is there a second? Second by Councilman Bacala, any questions?
No question.
Okay, there, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twelve, joint poll location, discussion impossible vote in regard to the approval by the town council of a petition from Verizon, New England and National Grid for a joint poll location on Lyman Avenue, do I have a motion to approve the joint poll location?
So move.
Motion been made by Councilman Motone, is there a second? Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions?
Go public.
All right, there being none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirteen, claims submitted, town council discussion impossible vote in regard to the claims received from the following, Matthew Pierce, one oh nine Stella Drive, North Providence, Rhode Island, Elaine Samurian, twenty to Julio Drive, North Providence, Rhode Island, Kathy Krasnowski. twenty-eight Benjamin Drive, North Providence, Rhode Island. Anthony Salvatore, eleven thirteen Alfred Drive, North Providence, Rhode Island. Robert Douglas, twenty-four Grand Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. We have a motion to send these to the Claims Committee.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any questions?
I have one question, Council President.
Go ahead.
The one from Robert Douglas, is that a brand new one, or is that a continuation of?
No, that's the one we had the other night.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. All set.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Item number fourteen, Claims Committee Report. Town Council discussion and possible vote regard to the Claims Committee report to be presented by Councilman Juicy. Councilman?
Make a recommendation. We, okay, as submitted.
Okay, motion been made by Councilman Juicy. Is there a second?
Second.
That was seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any questions?
Go public.
Maybe none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Item number fifteen, Finance Committee Report. Town Council discussion and action regard to the finance committee report, should say, to be presented by Councilman Amorigi. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, we met, the Finance Committee met last week on Monday night. We had two issues to discuss. One was one abatement or proposed abatement over one thousand dollars, which was recommended and voted on that we approve said abatement. So I'd like to make a motion to approve an abatement of one thousand dollars on four thirty-three Wentworth, Quatucket Avenue.
There motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Famigetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it.
Thank you. And the second item on the agenda was a discussion and possible vote on the recycling totes and providing extras to residents. The committee recommended that we continue to monitor it and gather information to see full impact on the town. Therefore, we voted to continue that matter to the next Finance Committee meeting in January twenty twenty-one. That's it.
Okay. I couldn't hear the end of that, Kenny. Did you make a motion? Someone was ruffling their papers in the microphone.
I actually didn't make a motion. I just said that we had voted to continue it to the next Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number sixteen, Ordinance Committee Report.
We just need to, Councilman, we just need to accept that report.
Just, okay, do I have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Maton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Item number sixteen, Ordinance Committee Report. Town Council discussion and action regard to the Ordinance Committee report to be presented by Councilman Famigetti. Please see Ordinance Introductions following this item. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. So as you highlighted, there are going to be two ordinances coming out of committee. Mainly, the other items are staying in to consider other traffic patterns, traffic issues. Everybody's got the Ordinance Committee report in front of them, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept the report.
There motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala. Any questions? Maybe none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Item number seventeen, Ordinance Introduction. Discussion and possible vote to introduce ordinance number twenty dash ten, amending chapter nineteen, article ten, section nineteen dash thirty of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled "No Parking on Certain Streets Generally" to provide for certain parking restrictions on Charlotte Street in the town of North Providence. We have a motion to introduce ordinance number twenty dash ten.
I'll make a motion to introduce and advertise.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Maton. Is there any questions?
Go public.
Maybe none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Item number eighteen, Ordinance Introduction. Discussion and possible votes introduce an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence to provide for no-through trucking on Franklin Street. We have a motion to introduce the no-through trucking to introduce and advertise no-through trucking on Franklin Street.
So moved.
So moved. Motion been made by Councilman Amorigi, seconded by Councilman Famigetti. Any questions?
Mr. President.
Councilman?
We were, I was at the, I'm not on the Ordinance Committee, but I was on, I was at the meeting. We were supposed to get a tonnage. Did we ever get the tonnage of the trucks that do not belong there?
There is, let's see, four tons.
Four tons?
Yes, and the ordinance provides, let me just get to the part, provided, however, nothing in this ordinance shall affect the use of said street by any fire truck, town public works, truck, police vehicle, ambulance, or other motor vehicle or truck using such streets and highways in emergency, provided, however, that nothing in the ordinance shall affect the use of said street by any UPS or Federal Express truck, so-called, or a similar-sized delivery vehicle making periodic, daily deliveries.
Thanks.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, motions been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Okay, I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Best of luck.
Manny, this town knows you with depth of gratitude.
Thank you, Manny.
Thank you, Manny.
Well, everybody just have a safe, happy holiday and a safe New Year. And I'm telling you guys, the next four years are going to be exciting years for you guys. A lot of exciting things are going to be coming in North Providence. So just, do the best you can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manny.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
I'm motion.
Been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, guys.